Long Anthony Union High School District meeting on June twenty first. The first thing on agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Nothing online?
No.
We'll move on to the finance or the financials report for April and May, which are in the board packet. I have a motion to accept the reports.
So.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We have the being community-based learning program nomination.
There's a memo in your packet about what this relates to, or just has to vote to accept the check.
Okay, can I motion to accept the check?
Select it. I'm reading for those.
Yes, that's okay. He's gonna give it to them.
Yep. As a gesture of appreciation, the community-based learning program at Mount Anthony Union High School received a gift in the form of a $200 check from Terry Saunders-Boucher. We would like to, they would like to use some of this money to purchase a plaque and establish an annual award to recognize the student who demonstrated the most outstanding commitment to their community through community-based learning. They put it in the cat and the check herself so that she could personally thank the students who helped her during time of need. As of now, this will not be a school in school board, just a recognition with the names on the plaque hung at the school. That was from Allison Brigham, who is the community-based learning board coordinator.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think that's the end. Do we write this? Are we send thank you notes to?
You can include your clerk if you want.
Okay. Do I need to ask? Can I just ask separately or do I have to ask me?
You can strike the clerk to do. I would be happy to.
Okay.
Do you have this in your packet?
Yes.
There's not contacted vote for, I'll go to Allison. Go to Allison or update it where it's been held at that.
Great, thank you.
For my office, one of the others.
Moving on to operations, the HVAC bid opens.
And the SBSU director of construction management and whatever your title is, sweetie.
Thank you so much, my friends. I, part of the requirement for the Art Besser funds is to open these in a warm public meeting. This is a construction arrangement pre-qualification exercise to move forward with hiring a construction manager to manage the HVAC projects in both the elementary district but also in the MAU. We're putting in air conditioning in the middle school. It's about 2.5 million. And we're still working on the design for the high school. We received one bid. It's from Naylor and Green. And they emailed it to me as well. We've reviewed it. We have worked with Naylor and Green before. They're a very trustworthy contractor, so I would request that the board please vote for us to move forward with procuring construction management services for the HVAC projects at the Mount Anthony Union District Schools with Naylor and Green.
Is there press on that?
Not yet.
Will this happen this summer or is it next year?
So, that is a great question. So, the plan was to get it this summer because the funding stream for our certain, I can talk at one, if I can do the short version or long version.
Shortest.
Okay. So, we tried our best. I'm gonna try to get as much of the equipment set this spring and everything connected. I'm sorry, this set, the equipment set this fall, everything connected this spring so that by the time it gets warm at the end of the school year, we'll be able to have the air conditioning.
So, it's right at the end of the tunnel.
And is that the high school?
Middle school.
So, the middle school is 100% construction documents. We have estimates, professional estimates. The high school has two different pots of money. They're both federally funded. One is from the Art Besser and one is through the IAQ efficiency Vermont stream. We have $750,000 for the high school in the IAQ stream. Right now, we're working on the design to add ventilation, the air conditioning to the cafeteria with that pot of money. Because we, that pot of money is getting easier to spend and we know that that's a priority at the moment.
Without a price associated with this bid and we're discussing money in the public, it may not be a good thing. I would refer that to superintendent. We should not be doing that. That's all.
Yeah. So, I, I'm happy to drill down on that. The, we have asked them for their sort of laundry list of construction and maintenance services. And we would definitely make sure they're within the industry standard of what those services cost in that current marketplace. And I'm happy to bring that to the board. I just wanna keep moving forward with getting this work done.
So, to clarify, what is it that you're asking for us to approve, like the, bringing, accepting the qualifications of the and moving forward with engaging them for a contract? Would the contract come back before the board for a vote or would it?
Yeah.
Is that my answer?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay, is that my answer?
That's why I'm saying we shouldn't be discussing money because we hadn't put a price out here. That's actually not good.
Yeah. And the way that the state and federal procurement is set up is that we can't ask for a price. We have to ask for the pre-qualifications first and those have to be accepted by the board and then we'll go on to price up.
So, that's why I said we should price.
Pre-qualifications.
Correct. Thank you. Is, do we have any other federal, like, is it fine that we only have one pre-qual, like, that we had one bid to open?
So, that's been pretty consistent with all the other federally funded projects. Either because the HVAC projects in general, we bid them out as a whole package and got zero bidders. We bid them out individually and we got zero bidders. And so, we bid out Woodford Hollow. We got one bidder. And so, this is the other vehicle through which the federal funding will allow us to procure construction and maintenance services and move forward with construction.
Can I answer your question, Seth?
Yes, I understand. Does that, does that answer your question around for?
Yeah, well, the clarification is that this is, you're asking the board only for a qualification approval and for information only for this company, not to go ahead and start doing work or doing anything else. We don't do open bids.
Yeah, no, and we, the, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The, what my intent is once we accept these is to start working with the general contractor to get their laundry list of services. Make sure they're within industry standards and then, and then formalize an agreement that you guys would then approve. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Are there other questions? So, the next step will be to come back to us with the, before we're to start this.
Oh, yeah.
With a proposal for work.
Yeah, and there's, especially with the state, there's four or five more steps of approval before I can even break ground. So, you're, yeah, you're, we're not in danger of starting any projects or spending any money without that vote.
Do I make a motion to accept the pre-qualification of the construction?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor? Aye.
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 It's John Jones here. I just, I think, I think ladies.
Ladies.
Yeah, aye, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, opposed? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're gonna move on to agenda. We have minutes, warrants, requirements, leave of absence, resignations and nominations. Would the board like to go through this line by line or? Um, we like to, we'll do it all together.
I'm moving to accept all together.
Same. Any dis, oh my goodness, I don't know. Do we need, any discussion? No, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I mean, you're done.
Since she's talking, that's nothing.
Um, that, the motion is carried. We're going to move on to the German exchange program proposal.
This is a request to restart a German exchange program that MAU had at one point. It's a bilateral exchange with a school in Germany that will involve a group of German students coming to Bennington and MAU for 10 to 14 days in May of 2024, so almost a year from now. And then a group of MAU students going to Germany for two weeks at the end of June of 2024. The exchange addresses all the world language standards as the students will be actively reading, writing and speaking and listening in German, developing, developing competencies and connections. Students will also attend classes while in Germany and complete a joint project with their German peers on a topic of interest to them. The exchange is arranged through, supported by the longstanding German-American partnership program. The intended travel plans are to take a charter bus from Yankee Trails to Mount Anthony Union High School to Boston Logan International Airport. And they're flying to Zurich, Switzerland, where they'll meet the cooperating teacher there and take a train from Zurich to Germany and refer, their return flight from Boston reverse that Zurich train to Zurich. And then sort of back to Boston. They don't, they're asking the year in advance for planning purposes because, you know, pricing of tickets, all that hasn't begun until they get approval to restart this program. If your question is when the last time the school did this, I do not have that answer, but.
I can tell you that I, something similar when Carly was a junior and we hosted two French students for two weeks. It was a great experience. Unfortunately, they didn't have enough, Carly wasn't a French student, but they didn't have outside weather. So, we took them for two weeks and it was wonderful.
So.
And I played the chaperone that day.
Asking board to approve the exchange program with Germany. They both approve.
Um, so we have a motion on the table, right? Can we, this is for, that's to have a discussion now, so go ahead.
I'm just, when we did those other programs and way back, we had people that spoke the language. And my question is, whom do we have now that, that we will be relying on to hear that up because I hear this thing about that and whether this went to the education committee or not and then talking about having some people or having that part of a program. Us being the, I mean, they would have to have some kind of format, especially in the audience.
I have to see it to be from the principal who wasn't able to be here this evening, so I'm reading this place.
Am I allowed to say here?
Sure, it would have to recognize you.
Could you state your name, please?
Sure. My name's Dylan Weida. And my occupation?
Yes.
I'm German and Spanish teacher at the high school.
He's on the application.
Um, yeah.
Yes.
So, um, do you want to give more?
Absolutely. He probably can.
Provide some.
Yes, question.
Sure, yeah. I'm the German teacher at the high school. We've had German now. This is our third year with German. I'm a German major. I speak fluent German. I lived in Germany in 2009 to 2010, studied abroad in Germany in 2007. No, 2006, 2006, spring of 2006 and might spend a semester there. We're also working with a cooperating teacher, obviously, who's a veteran teacher at the school where we'll be going in Konstanz in southern Germany. And she'll be our, our main support person there. She's a fluent German and English speaker. She's a German teacher.
So, how many years ago was this, has this been suspended, too?
Yeah, I do not know. I know Anya Pfeffer was the last teacher to do a German exchange with the school. You guys might know better than I. She was on before my time.
Yeah.
But I'm guessing in the eight to 10 year range. I don't know.
She spoke about seven languages.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary.
I assumed you were here for the bill.
I already said I'm fluent German.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Can I ask a question? Sorry, so we're approving the program and then we will be seeing the field trip request?
Field trip request is here. So, you need to approve international travel, so that's what you're.
Okay, and I wasn't sure. I guess I didn't see it on.
We're asking for action recall.
It's on the exchange?
No, I know it's on the exchange, like, I know it's on paper, but like generally we see like someone signed off that like they have to write them on a chaperones.
I've not done that yet.
Okay.
Because we want, we have, we wanted your approval that you would approve international travel before.
Before, so.
Yeah, yeah. It's not, I have the.
So, we will see that.
And he does, he does, he does list one, two, three, four, five chaperones, potential chaperones, but and it says number of students 15, but everything else is still to be determined.
Okay, so we will put, so we approve the program and we'll see this form before the group can ask questions. So, we have a motion on the table. Is there any other discussion?
What was the motion again?
I believe the motion was to approve the, the international, the German exchange program.
Date is June 16th, 24 through July 3rd of 24.
So, are we, we're approving the trip and the exchange program or, or just?
The exchange is the trip. That's the.
And I guess I was understanding as though we're starting something that would start annually again, not, I mean.
Now, this is, it, it very well might be, but they would have to submit this form every year.
So, it's after.
The reason I'm asking the question this way because I'm, I'm trying to make sure we do the, the right thing. And I hate to say that at different times that we pop up and it may be that someone may be associated with a certain area and then we decided to put a trip up and go to that, that area as opposed to doing an academic program. And that's why I mentioned something about the education committee and saying that, hey, how does this fit in with all the other things we're gonna do? A startup and keep it maintained. And if this is a one-time thing, I'm, I'm, me personally, I'm having a problem with the value of it because what about the kids that's gonna come the next year? Although, the, you know, the previous years, we had laboratories associated with the high school and they went for 20 years along that line with the someone that sponsored some things. So, I'm just trying to say that this is a one-time thing or whether this is a program and I, that's why I'm just asking a question.
I would not, this is a field trip request one. This is not a curriculum proposal from the principal to start a program. You already do have a German class. Is it really? Right, at, at the high school. Can we ask if there's an intent to not have this be a one-off? Ask whatever you want.
Yeah, I, I.
Uh, yeah, the program is designed with the idea that these are long-lasting exchanges. Obviously, that depends on the success of the relationship between myself and the cooperating teacher along with the success of the exchange. So, GAP, the German-American Partnership Program, supports us and encourages long-lasting exchanges. My intention is to run the exchange, if not every year, every other year. It would depend on, I think from their side, from the Germany side, they could send a group every year. Will we be able to send 15 students every year? Maybe not. You might have to go every other year to be able to get enough students who it hasn't been offered to and can, can take the time and afford the trip. So, the intention would be, but yes, a longstanding exchange.
So, is there another form that could be used versus a field trip form? Because it seems like this is slightly different than just a regular field trip in a sense that we have students coming from, right? And we have students going to. So, it seems like this is more of an exchange program than a field trip as opposed to using a field trip form like similar to what we're doing for Panama, where we're just a field trip and then you have chaperones and so forth. But I, I get the fact that it's similar to the field trip because we're just sending 15 students out of country for a period of time with chaperones. But in turn, we're then hosting students coming here, which I, it feel, to me feels very different than just a field trip. So, I don't know if there is another.
There is another form, but, you know.
So, there isn't another form, okay, but.
But you could do it as separate votes if you want to approve the field trip and you wanna approve hosting. Well, is there a requirement of the board to, to approve hosting in general? And you can vote on anything you want, you know, whether, right?
Yeah, but it seems from my perspective, it also affects people that are actually hosting.
I mean, this is something that, they're trying to plan this year off because there's a lot of planning. So, I, I think these are all good questions that if you approve this tonight, they can come back with the more detailed information about how the hosting is gonna work, you know? So, if you wanna take two separate votes, one they'll allow MAU to host students from Germany and both the field trip will allow them to go. And I'm sure Dylan would love to come back at another meeting.
I can answer some more questions now as well.
Yeah.
I do have.
I mean, and I, I personally feel.
I don't know how planned you are, like, you know, who's hosting their families somehow or not.
Not yet, but I do have, like, the, on the German, I can speak to the process that the German school has because they're a little bit ahead of us because they're coming in.
Month ahead of you.
Yeah, and their school, they're trying to get their families for coming picked before they leave for their summer break, which is the end of July. They have a six-week summer starting the end of July. So, they've already proposed to their students, they've had seven, they've, they've accepted 17 applicants. So, the plan is to have 17 10th graders come to MAU. So, she has that group picked. They vetted them. They did a, you know, application with an essay and the teacher, the team teachers looked at the applicants and decided who would get to go. So, that, that's where they are right now. We're out for summer. So, our plan is to meet in September and hold an interest meeting at the high school, explaining the exchange and asking families to sign up. So, in September, we would actually be looking to, we would obviously first try and pair students with German students who are gonna be traveling to Germany. That's the, that's the priority, direct exchange, so one-for-one exchange. You, you host a kid here, you go over there. We've done an initial interest survey with my German students. I had about, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. I had, but it was around 25 responses and 15 students said they were very interested in, in the program. So, I think the interest is there and that wasn't even all my students because that was just second semester. I think the interest is there. It'll be, again, meeting in September, finding out who's, who's interested, finding host families. We plan to have them paired with host families. Our timeline is like the end of September, early October, to have them paired and then we'll actually start a virtual exchange with them so they can get to know each other prior to the German students coming in May. Once the group was picked and host families were picked, then there's some more work obviously involved with actually planning their stay here. What sort of activities are they gonna do? Which days are they gonna be in school? What, you know, all of those questions, making sure that they have a welcome when they get here and those types of questions to make sure their experience is, is the best it can be. And they would do the same for us, obviously, on the return trip, so. And there is like, I do have packets from GAP, you know, I'm not just making this up. They, they provide.
Yep.
They provide.
I just wanted to test the application.
They provide all the steps for planning and implementing and even down the policies of, you know, to be supported by this program. The exchange has to be at least 14 days. You have to spend at least 10 days with the host family in the country. You have to spend at least five days attending the host school. So, they stipulate a fair amount. 10 student minimum to have to, and they provide a travel stipend for two chaperones if you have a group of 10 or more.
Sure, we have another question. Sorry.
I'm spouting initially.
The outfits are very helpful.
And so, yeah, I'm just curious about the process. I'm assuming that it would be when there is pairing of host families or host families decided on our end. I'm assuming that they're doing this on their end as well. But what is the protocol? I know for chaperones, we get background checks and all that stuff. So, I'm assuming that that.
The same would apply.
That the same would apply for a, a host family. And how is that different, if anything, from how we host foreign exchange students in general?
Speaking from experience, I've done both. I've, I had a foreign exchange student for a year and I had two French exchange students for two weeks. There's nothing different. I took them to school every day. I made them dinner. It was like, wow.
No, I meant, I meant, I meant to like the background check.
No, I went through a background. A background check with the, with the French. It was just a background check. It was, you know, but with the year-long student, it was a house visit. So, yeah.
Are you asking the background check on the German parents though, or is that what you're?
Well, I'm assuming I, you have to trust that their organization is doing.
This is an international recognize.
Yeah, I have to imagine that it's, it's doing. I'm just curious about our, our responsibility
with respect to.
Or respect to the German students.
Yeah, I have a question. Am I?
Yes, my, my comment is to this, is that this is not the venue to trust all of these things and get approved, but it should have been in the education committee and been paired before we got to this point to talk about that and then make a recommendation. That's what I'm thinking. Because we're trying to hatch out all the details here and, and give approval and we're not sure what they all are. I'm not.
So, I, I, I'm sorry. I, so I, I understand it's like we're chasing a tail, like you need approval in order to start like assessing like real interest and assessing like how much it's gonna cost. I think the reason why I was looking for the field trip form is then frequently when we go to do a field trip, for instance, like to Waden or some other activity that goes out, like that information is provided into the word and then looked, and looked at from a field trip perspective. And I understand that we have, because it's international, that there's more requirement. Um, I think one of the things that, I mean, personally, I'd like to see is like, I, I, I like the idea of this. I'd like to see like before, like once they get in like motion or fall. So, because part of it is like, how are we paying for the trip? Is it, is it equitable? Like, do we have, is, is there, like, are people of, um, are we gonna support people that don't have the flights to travel? Like, I mean, I know frequently we talk about like the importance of quality in our district. How are we gonna make sure that this like provides that same, it falls under that same net? So, those are my concerns. I personally don't like mind getting ball rolling on it. I do, I do think that there should be more checks with this so that I, so that we know what we're paying, spending money on and that we know that, like, the process is followed.
No cost to the board, right? So, this is, is, is fundraising for this or how is that?
Yeah, so there is, um, we will do some fundraising. Obviously, fundraising can't cover the entire cost for a student to go.
So, let me, let me have backup. What is your deadline for this? Like, if this board is reluctant to approve it tonight because they feel they don't have enough information to act, what, what do you need from the board to be able to move forward with planning for this? That you're going to come back with additional information? They're gonna meet again in, in August.
I guess I'm, I'm not entirely sure what information is missing at this point. Obviously, I don't have travel dates.
Well, it's, well.
And cost, like, I don't have a specific cost.
Yeah.
But I can give you an estimate and I.
So, if the board voted tonight to allow you to go forward with planning, is there an other protection for the board that you come back at a future meeting for the final approval of the trip? Like, if a, a vote to allow planning to begin, but you need to come back and you have more information before any contracts are signed with, with this group? That's why I would, I would, I would like, I would express my support for that because it allows for the, for the planning to happen, confident, relative confidence that it, that the trip will happen and that. There's nothing you need to sign before the August meeting, is there?
No. So, I, I mean, for me, that feels like.
I think it would all feel better.
It feels like I don't want, I personally don't want to discourage this activity. And if, to me, on to your point, if there's a process that we need to put these through in the future, I think we, you know, we can discuss that as board and decide how that is, but for, I don't want to.
We can, we can do what the superintendent's talking about. All we have to do is say that this. We can, we can do what this superintendent is talking about, all we have to do is say that this board support the idea
Okay.
Of an ex of a program to be established in the German department that associates itself with students going from here and students coming from there to be hosted. And we need to get all the details worked out if and if this board voted for that that way, that opened the door for the program to be, that we endorse the program and it needs to have all these other things doing.
So, no, no, no.
Uh two two deadlines I do want to bring up, one, the German students, I would ask the board to approve them coming here in May, they at some point usually air, so group airline bookings start about eleven months in advance, three hundred thirty days in advance. So sometime potentially over the summer, they could be um looking at flights. I'd have to look at a calendar, but it's eleven months, so they could be looking pretty soon at booking flights with their travel agent.
But but you explained that the the way the process is, is they can't come unless we're sending students though, right? And that's what.
So they, so you see a hitch there. I guess my question is, i- if the German teacher doesn't have approval from our board, can she send her students over here?
That kinda isn't an exchange, you guys.
Well, it's not an exchange, but it's.
No, we have ultra building, it's still.
Yes.
It still provides benefits to both both sets of students.
I guess I'm.
It's the downside.
I guess what I'm, I'm not quite sure what the downside of this program is to begin with.
Right, to to Leon's point, to Leon's point, like some of this stuff should have been hashed out, but how would Dylan know that? So may maybe it's on us, we need to let people, like anybody that's a club advisor or somebody organizing something like this, like, hey, come to the education committee meeting and we'll talk about it there, so we're not.
It's really a discussion for the full board.
That it's not, it's I I I agree with that, I would not be, I would not want this just at the educational committee meeting, this is a full board conversation. But um I guess, I guess, I guess what are, are the concerns more the logistics or are we? Because I think if we're in support of it, I think we're in support of it. And if we're not, then we're not. I I don't quite understand what what the, I'm not getting it.
I I'm not either, I must do it, and there are steps that the these companies, they do this for a living, it's what they do. They set up exchange students and programs every day. I think it's it's culturally, like, I mean, my sister who's fifty
And my children have done absolutely different.
Have, who did it, and she's still in touch with her Spanish exchange students to this day.
Yeah.
And that girl came to our house for, you know, the two.
Here's a logistic question, Leon, so.
Yes, it's been going on for years.
We say they they come, right, because they're gonna buy their airfare.
Right, yeah.
But what if you don't have enough students sign up?
So that happened to you.
In the exchange.
Yeah, so.
What happens there?
I think from the app's perspective, um the airfare is refundable up to, they don't actually ticket until like sixty days prior to the flight.
Are they still coming?
So they do have some.
What if you don't get the ten, which is your minimum?
They, and right, and for a group ticket, that's true as well, actually, if you book a group ticket, you can book without, I don't know if anybody's ever group booked a group airline ticket, but you can book without passengers. You can just say, I have a group of X number of people traveling for these dates and you and you don't pay anything, they just reserve that block for you, and at some point you pay a deposit, some point you, you know, it's all spelled out by the airlines. Um I guess my point is, they could, the German group could decide not to come and cancel if that was the case. And I Gap is, we we don't sign any contracts or pay any money directly to Gap, to the to the German American Partnership Program. Which is one reason that this program is, that exchange, true exchanges are far more affordable than going through a a tour company like EF, for example, it's a different type of program, but it also has a different type of cost. But we don't pay anything to this, to 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 the German American Partnership Program. So we're not signing any contracts, we're not committing any money.
But but I mean, at some point the balls, I mean, from my point, at some point the ball's gonna get rolling and and to your point, like, like, there is, I I'm not, I'm not challenging like the value of this to the organizational students, right? I'm challenging like that the board, this is less information if like than we have for a trip to New York City, right? And so like for me, like that's that's what feels out of sync with it, and which is why I was trying to separate like both of like, hey, cool, get it started. And like, let's get this in front of us, so that we as a board, if someone asks us about it, we have understanding, a fund, know, understanding, both have a funding source and so that, like, and I hear, what I'm hearing is is that this is primarily for people who either fundraise, either like or like fundraise or have uh the means to get their child to that location, is that?
There is scholarship money from Gap as well.
Okay. Okay, so I mean, that that's my uh piece, I guess we have motion on the table, I don't um to approve the exchange proposal, or is there other discussion that we need to have with this? To be back to, I mean, I think, I think, I think the question is, this, the the item says a program proposal, we're discussing an exchange. So we're actually on field ship and we're looking at approving a field trip without actually any of the details. And that that's my question, like, can we do what we had suggested?
You've got to trust the administration to make sure that the chaperones will be, you know.
No, but we've asked, but why do we have the form if it's not, you know, if it isn't with the board?
I think why you don't have the form is.
No, I mean, like, why wouldn't we have the form, is my question.
We're asking.
Like, like you're saying, I don't trust the administration to not do the thing, but like, why is the form placed if it doesn't have to come to us?
I think I want focusing on one word here, and that's proposal, it's not a commitment.
Mm-hmm, right.
And if we go just as it's worded, we should be able to, I think, go through the motion and and approve the proposal, this is not the final.
This was brought to the fore for a discussion because it is not something that hasn't happened my, in my time. This is a very different field trip, this isn't going to New York City. So approve the concept of it, so they can move forward.
I know, that's my understanding of that.
No, I was sorry.
I'll be the form and give it to you, but it's, you know, it's it's, I don't know why it wasn't included in the packet.
No, I mean. I'm not referring to the packet now, I mean, like, when when you have the information, I just want to come back to the board, that's right. Like, you couldn't possibly have the information now about this, so why don't we approve this and move forward?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, my mistake, I didn't anticipate that this was going to be the issue that it is. You know, I I think this has sound educational value, it's through a recognized uh organization, there's all kinds of schools participate in these programs, um I didn't, uh you know, my fault for not anticipating that this would be the controversy that it is. I apologize for that.
So the motion currently as it stands is to accept the German exchange proposal, is that the agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's what we voted on, or did our first and second on this.
Yes, so it's on the table, if there's no more discussions, we're gonna vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um opposed? I mean, I just want to make sure that. You see what I'm saying?
Definitely, I see Mary's talking.
Yeah.
I just would like your vote on this.
No, I voted, we're good.
Okay, so um abstain, motion carries. I look forward to seeing the creation in the future. Um we're gonna move on to superintendent's department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address one item that uh came up at the last meeting, that is the athletic director position. I had extensive meetings with the HR director about that the contract, the uh athletic director, activities director is, he had a one year contract with you. Uh similar to your principal contracts, it has a rollover clause unless you notify him that you're not going to renew it. Uh I met with the athletic director after what we discussed last month. I gave him my expectations going forward, and his contract will roll over for one more year. And we have uh an expectation plan that we reviewed for uh for moving forward into the next school year. And that's, other than, you know, getting to the last day of school, the last day of staff was today for teachers, yesterday was the last day for support staff, as you know, the students' last day was last Friday the sixteenth. A lot of positions to fill this summer um and across the SU and we are, those of you at the SU meeting last night, now that we're also planning a summer retreat for administrators for it's called a retreat, but it's really going to school for two days for uh policy review, uh legal review. When our attorney comes, we go policies, we have keynote speaker, um and retraining professional learning for now being all your vice principals, principals, directors, assistant directors, assistants. About close to thirty of us will be in that training for two days, August seventh and eighth, and that's what we're wrapping up planning for right now.
Well, I'm sorry, Jim, what dates can I name?
Uh, that's October.
October.
Sorry.
August seventh.
August seventh. Do you have a question also?
Yeah, we had a pending in that contract for superintendent, we had a pending job being held. That one year extension that we, I mean, we gave that position, is that position, that, are we still holding that job?
Good job, I'm not.
For the, we're talking about the, they have a very good record.
Yeah.
Previous job was held, then you go back to it.
No, I know, this.
Well, that's what I'm trying to make sure, because that didn't come up, we extended it for a year, and I'm saying, well, now we gotta make sure we fill that position.
Yeah, because that person had a um you're, what you're saying, the person that filled the teaching position that the athletic director held uh was a long, but long term, so that's not the term, um one year appointment, but no, the, there's no fallback. Is the athletic director.
So he 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 forfeit that right to go back, is what I'm getting at.
Yes, yeah. That's what I mean, there's no fallback rights into that position.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be an open position.
If there was an open position, then I'd go back, but I'm just saying.
They'd be free to apply, or he or anyone would be free to apply for that, but no, there's no guarantee for employment.
Yeah, but that's what we can't ask, because I do.
Right, he had a leave, he had a leave of absence, that was the term I was looking for, but no, that's no longer valid.
Any other questions? Um we're gonna move on to policies. Um we have a policy four zero one, access control and visitor management. The um this is required by the A O E and it is a warning. You have um a motion to approve the warning, so.
Yeah, seconded.
Okay, um any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, um the motion carries. We have um policy two four seven zero, fire at emergency preparedness drills, A O, uh which is an A O E required policy, um can I have a motion to approve?
Of what?
Warning, I'm sorry, it's a warning, can I have a motion to approve?
Over warning.
Right.
So any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we have policy C, um three one zero zero, transportation, this is a warning. Have a motion to warn of three one zero zero?
Same.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
We have policy four zero zero one, harassment of employees, this is a warning of the policy. Have a motion to approve the warning?
Over.
Second.
Um um a discussion? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment that was made by a previous, I mean, I know four of them in terms of this particular policy. And that section of the policy, but dealing with administrative rigs, which is not the job of this board or the policy committee. Administrative rigs is the responsibility of the administrators to interpret the policy and add to the policy. So when that was edits made in the in the administrative rigs uh in terms of knowingly making a uh false accusations in here, and that's in section four, uh thirteen, section four page, I mean, and then number thirty four under that particular part of the con uh of policy. All of that is under administrative rigs. And so the board is not asking the, to approve the the administrative rigs, we're asking to approve the policy. The administrators are responsible for making sure that the policy uh the rich administrative rigs meet the requirement of the policy. And so in there, there was a question asked, as what happens if a person knowingly, that's that's what the wording says, and it was stricken out in the administrative rigs. We can have that, I can go back to the administrators and they can change that at any point in time, it doesn't have to be it doesn't affect the acceptance and the movement of the policy. Administration is notation to the administrators that there's a question about uh someone knowingly accusing someone and uh it's determined to be false. And so that part of it was stricken out, and I I would think that they would heed that on page seven and eight and go back and say what actions we wanted to take, uh they wanted to take in there. Normally, and what the reason, I think it was what's stricken is, it was deterring the fact that people were trying to come forward to to uh report harassment. And so it was stricken, but I don't want to put the words in their mouth as to why it was going here, but I I think that's what we we talked about. But I did want you to know that someone raised, and it was Susan, raised a question, I went back and looked and read and says, okay, that that part of it is in administrative rigs, and we're making note that the administrators, that they need to take a look at that to make a make a change there, if they needed to be, if it needed to be spelled out in any uh other language in terms of retaliations, uh not retaliation, but.
Yes, retaliation is covered pretty well in the policy.
But unknowingly making a false accusation, and it talks about it, them doing an investigation and then finding out that it wasn't right and so forth along that line, so I think that, I'll take back to the uh the uh a policy committee for the administrators to take a look at, but I just want you to know that that shouldn't hold the policy up.
I'm telling you that I would hold it up if that is taken out, I mean, that.
It's not a policy coming to the board, it's the administrative.
Then why is it being a policy in the first place?
Because it's administrative rigs and we try, well, it may, I'm just letting you know, administrative rigs are managed by the uh administrators and uh we can say to them, and that's what I'm saying to you, that you're not happy with some of whatever is taking place in the administrative and I think we're having a lot of that going on right now in terms of reviewing the policies and making sure the administrative rigs follow those things, so uh you can do whatever you like if you want to, right?
What what is possibly being taken out, I'm sorry.
See, correct, if I'm understanding, man, are you saying?
Uh administrative rigs, number thirty four.
Page seven.
Number four, administrative responsibilities and actions, and then down below, under one of those, it says a uh false complaint, and knowingly making a false complaint in their administrative rigs. Well, they said that they would do all kind of things, you know, in terms, that they would be held responsible for and for making a false accusation and be treated with, I mean, I forget whatever the language says on that a lot.
Sorry.
But that's what they were saying, and they took that out. And I'm saying to you, that's the administrator's part, and that's what Jim need to be looking at with assistants and durings administrators. You can, as a board, write, you can tell them that you're not happy with not seeing that there. But it shouldn't be that we hold a policy up because we don't have administrative rigs for all our policies, so if I had to, we're holding all of them. I mean, it's not here.
Good question, so we're we're as a board warning just the policy portion and that the administrative rigs are here for the benefit of? Good question, so, so we're, we're as a board warning just the policy portion and that the administrative rigs are here for the benefit of. The board to understand what those are?
That's correct.
Is there any discussion, other discussion? Can I, um, have a motion to approve the warning of four zero zero one harassment?
We added, I'm just, oh.
Okay, let's, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm saying, have you proposed?
But, no, no, I, I, I was.
The motion carries to warn that, um, moving on to four zero zero three, bullying prevention of adults, um, if this is a warning. Have a motion to approve the warning?
Over.
Second.
Um, any discussion? No discussion, all, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just moving on to F, uh, five zero five zero, discipline of pupils, suspension and expulsion of people, pupils, adoption, would adopt.
I, I apologize because, um, I know this is to adopt, but just reading the language, I think we should just add clerical language. Ten school days instead of ten days, I mean, does that seem? See, I mean, there could be a little bit of room for misunderstanding there, when we have to go back through it.
I mean, so why, why don't we make a, have a motion, we'll have a discussion, so can I have a motion to approve, to adopt? Now, so, go, go ahead, Tori, so are you asking for clarification that it's ten days or ten schools?
Yeah, well, I, I'd like to add the language that it's ten school days, but I, I admit, I don't know if every policy, um. You know, enumerates that, or, um, you know, clarifies that, but I would. Uh, and it's because this has come out, come up a few times, it seems like it makes sense to clarify ten school days as opposed to ten days.
And what is truly the intent, is the intent currently ten days or ten schools?
I mean, I think the intent was ten school days, right?
Ten school days.
But does that, I mean, does everyone get what I'm saying?
I do, and I, and I, I agree with you. That chips.
So sorry to do it when, because I know we already warned it, my bad.
Especially when we have weekends that can go over that timeframe, I think that it makes sense.
That will not change the intent of the policy, it, it's not a suspension. It's a procedure thing by law that says what the superintendent's doing, saying that it's ten school days, and it's always been there. And so the language, because when we met at the policy, we didn't go into discussing that. And it could easily be edited to say ten continuous school days if you want to have it that way. And this is, I'm, this, this is why it's so important to have board members participate at the policy meeting. To clarify all, to get all these things, to help fix these things, and right now, we need to make sure we participate.
That's fair.
Okay, and so if that's what you're saying, that would be in the minutes for rigid to straighten out, but I'm just clarifying what you're saying, because you said it. And then go in the minutes, and this, this board was, it was, and it, and it's one that, it shouldn't have to take a board vote, it's just something that. Needs to happen to clarify, and that can easily happen, uh, even though it's warned, it's adopted, that language won't change the policy.
Works for me.
Oh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with that additional. Um, moving on to search and seizure, five zero eight five, um, this is two, this is a, um, policy that. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay, um, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, motion carries. Moving on to administrative sports, it doesn't look like we have a student representative here, it's the right one, they're joining their vacation.
Yes.
Okay, um, and, uh, Tim, uh, principal, Tim Payne, is not here, I know the past, some sports owners, students.
Uh, I have, I didn't know that he was, that would be here, and I was not prepared to speak out if we have to.
That's fine, and we wanted to know.
All right, great, thank you. Um, so, um, well, just gonna kind of piggyback some of what Mr. Colkeen has indicated in this report as well. Um, you know, busy wrapping up the end of the year, um, on Thursday last week, uh, we had, uh, sixth and seventh and eighth grade awards, uh. Ceremonies, that was a lot of fun, we had a lot of families come join us, a lot of smiling students, we got to hear from the, like, uh, M A U M S course. Uh, so that was, uh, those were successful events, uh, that same night, it was a busy day for us at the middle school last Thursday, that same night we did our eighth grade celebration. Uh, weather cooperated wonderfully, and we were able to be outside and, uh, had a really nice, uh, ceremony with. Uh, you know, an after-party dance, uh, for eighth grade students, so that was all very good and productive. Um, we wrapped up our school week with students on Friday, and, uh, we had the tradition of. M A U M S staff going out to the bus loop and waving and saying goodbye to the buses as they eat the market. Uh, yelling nice things out the windows to us and waving to us, and so that was, uh, that was a lot of fun. Um, then this week, uh, yesterday, we had our, our annual staff luncheon, it's a pop lock, uh, we. Uh, do years of service recognitions, retirement recognitions, so that's always a nice way to, to wrap up the year. Um, as Mr. Colkeen indicated today, last day for staff in the building. Again, as Mr. Colkeen indicated, we are busy hiring, um, I thank the board, you've approved four positions, uh, for hires for me tonight, so thank you for that. To math teachers, uh, land steward, and a health teacher. Um, and, uh, we are in the process of working through the following hires, uh, we are, uh. Close to sending over a nomination for two security officers, we're going through the final stages of that. We have our, our new gazing harassment and bullying coordinator, uh, posting up, uh, with HR to write a job description for that. It's a new, new position for, for a building level position for the district, so, uh, that is posted, I have reposted my lit coach, uh, been unsuccessful in that search. Um, this year, but reposted that, I'm also looking for a major space supervisor, an academic tutor and mentor. Um, an eighth grade math teacher, because my eighth grade, my eighth grade math teacher puts the health position. Um, sixth grade science teacher, and a long-term special education, um, uh, you know, fill-in for a returning. Uh, so we're gonna be working through that, uh, over the course of the next couple of months and, uh, in the next month or so, and, uh. Hopefully we'll have, uh, a lot more coming before the board, uh, in months. And then last, I'll just indicate that, uh, for summer recovery, uh, Kelly Brooks, again, I want to give a shout out to him, he is, uh, behavior interventionist at the middle school. Um, sometimes referred to as Mr. M A U, um, he is, uh, also my recovery coordinator, and so he's done a wonderful job this year organizing. Winter recovery sessions, sorry, uh, fall recovery session, winter recovery session, and spring recovery session, and now he's gearing up for our summer recovery session. Uh, we're inviting, uh, a hundred fifty students to join us for summer recovery work. Um, it's a large number, I'm happy that we're gonna be supporting, uh, you know, a number of students, um. I don't have a, a number on how many are currently registered, but the summer recovery coordinator, Mr. Brooks, is working through that process. You know, phone calls with families, we got a couple, um, kind of open doors where, you know, it's set up and parents will come in if that's easier and you can help them get registered. And, uh, that will be, uh, taking place in line with the rest of the district, July tenth through July twenty-seventh. I'm really pleased to say there's a, a social emotional learning component to our recovery sessions, it's not just academics, you know, we really. Focus on, uh, educating the whole child, um, you know, looking at like some behavioral and social aspects too. Um, so yeah, it's gonna be a, a fat full busy summer at the middle school, we got a lot of different people coming into the building, we're gonna have a lot of students. Uh, into the recovery sessions, so there'll be, uh, there'll be a hop and exciting place. Is all I have for you.
How, how long are they in school during, uh, recovery?
Uh, July tenth through July twenty-seventh.
Uh, how long is the day?
Oh, sorry, uh, it is, uh, it's eight fifteen to noon, I think it is, it's a half day.
So how are the, how are they selected to attend that?
Uh, they're selected to attend if they are not meeting any learning standards, any, in any domains that are reported out on the report card. So if they have, uh, not meeting the standard, a score level of one in any academic domain, we invite them to come, uh, participate in summer recovery.
It's all academic based, it's not in terms of any, one with like any social emotional issues, or like anyone that's really kind of struggled in that area?
Um.
That may need some additional structure throughout the summer, if that comes up.
Uh, one, there's a lot of overlap with the, with the two groups, and so we are very. Folk, we are cognizant, you know, of that, and there are other, if there is a student that needs that level of support that. Maybe doesn't fit them all for summer recovery, we have some other programs, like our experience lit camp and some other programs that are running. So we're, we're very cognizant of that, we try to invite students that could use the extra support at the school throughout the summer.
Um, how are we, so again with our, I, I know we're reluctant to, uh, retaining kids, they're like, what is the motivation, I guess, for. About those hundred and fifty kids, uh, to, to, to bring them, is it basically, are we just saying this basically to get them better prepared for. The next grade, but it's, but I mean, it, in, in essence, it's optional, right?
So, uh, the, the conversation that I'm having with families, and I'm asking my summer recovery coordinator to have with families, is that for my eighth graders. Um, you know, if they don't take us up on that option, um, I'm gonna be reaching out to Lieutenant Colkeen and talking through what next steps might be for those students. So I've, I've left it at that with those families, and, uh, you know, I, I plan to have a further discussion with, you know, Mr. Colkeen and Mrs. Boudreaux about how we can. Support those students if they are not taking us up on that recovery option, and, and a lot of that is keeping good data through all the different recovery options to see the different things that we've offered students and that.
Okay.
Different occasions that we don't pick them up, so that might help us, uh, you know, make a decision about how to support those students best.
I, I just wanted to say, uh. Personally, thanks Chris for the middle school. And ask that we support them in all the efforts that they need, because in my observation and other observations. We need to make sure we do everything to bring all those kids up to par. And all of the programs I did need to be used to the max. To get them there before they enter into the next phase at the high school. And hopefully we'll get that down to the elementary level, that we got kids that really need help. And they need to get those services and do more work to be able to meet the requirements when they come to the middle school. As opposed to having to have all these things, uh, that we see that, that they need when they get to the middle school. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any committees that want to report out on them, I don't know.
Um, I, I just kind of highlight what we talked about. Um, we had our educational athletics and activities committee meeting today. Um, and we had a lot of discussion about, um. Enrollments, um, potential, because we had some conversations in previous meetings about, um. Dropping enrollment or, um, switching of districts and understanding, um, we kind of came, I had. Um, Mr. Payne provided some information to Jim that he shared, um, in terms of enrollment changes from, you know, October to February of the past two years. Um, and it looks like we had less of a drop this year than we did last year. And there's some information on, you know, the categories in which they fit in, um, for the reasons why they're, um. Um, not enrolled any longer, um, there was a stat shared in a January meeting about a thirteen percent drop in enrollment, um. That I wanted to kind of get some clarity on, it doesn't appear that that seems to be in line with, with the data that is being shared in terms of.
It's probably from like fifteen or twenty years ago.
Yeah, so I don't know, I just want to make sure that that's clarified, that that, that number didn't necessarily appear to be accurate. Um, I don't know if that was a thirteen, um, percent drop from ten years ago to now, I don't know what that reference was. Um, and we can't really, um, without understanding where that question was, or where that figure came from. Um, can't really, um, validate that, so it does appear that there's about a one percent drop from. October to, um, February, and that is due to transferring schools, it's due to withdrawals from schools. That can constitute, um, dropout situations, um, but I did ask, um, Jim to go back, um, to Mr. Payne to collect some specific data on. The percentage of students within, um, within that withdrawal number that is, um. Uh, leaving the district to another school, or leaving the district to homeschool. Um, and we talked about, um, potentially getting some information on some questions that are asked when they are withdrawing from school. And if there isn't a, a process in place to obtain information in regards to why they are withdrawing from school. Or switching schools or homeschool, and maybe we look into creating some sort of, um, survey that would be provided to those students when they are. Withdrawing from school, so we understand, you know, what those reasonings are. Um, there were no new courses being proposed or offered for next year, so we did review that, um. Um, we did talk about, um, and if anybody wants a copy of it, um, Paul provided the current, um. Data in terms of, um, students for each of the clubs and sports, um, this past year. Um, we talked about the bus, um. Usage, um, and it appears to be primarily used for the middle school and primarily used by students that are participating in the recovery sessions. Um, we did talk about trying to figure out if there is some way of, um, figuring out. If there are barriers for children, for some of the students and why they're may not be participating in a club or an activity, and we talked about potentially. Another survey, um, at the beginning of the year to see, um. What some of those challenges are for students that may not, it could be just lack of interest, and that's fine too. It could be the variation of clubs that they're not interested in, it could be transportation, it could be different things, so try to figure that out. Um, and Tim also, um, provided Jim a presentation on the new six block schedule that's occurring now. Um, both, um, I mean, at the, uh, high school that, um, and we talked about some of the extensive. Positives of that new six block schedule as opposed to the block schedule we were on previously. Um, allowing students, um, consistency in each of their core classes throughout the year. Um, and not having students not take a core class for a whole year if they've had math first semester one year, and then. Math second semester another year, and then having, um, those struggles and the impacts that can have on testing and all of that kind of stuff, so. Um, we did talk about those benefits. And then we have some ideas and conversations that we're gonna be having throughout the school year and some recommendations for focuses for next year.
Questions, were there any other, was there a policy meeting?
There's lots of it, but I, I was, had to put it for the, I have a question. Before we get to that, I, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, and I, I wanted to make sure I understood what it was, only if you. We were talking about, I thought it was talking about student enrollment numbers, that, that report that we see coming.
Mm-hmm.
Monthly, uh, when we get it, those numbers were showing the drop, but then I didn't understand the question because what. And when you said, the reason they were dropping is because people are getting, maybe getting transferred and so forth. And my question then is to Jim, I thought we have enrollment each day when the students come to class. And whether they end the class and those order and the numbers are counted, uh, is that, I know we report. The average daily number at the, at a certain point, and that's how we do some things, but this thing is supposed to report every absentee. every absentee uh student's present every month. So it shouldn't be that if 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 a student was in my class and they dropped out or withdraw, then I don't count them as being absent continuously. Is what I'm trying to understand.
Actually, they withdraw.
Yeah, and so that's why I was wondering how that, I mean, so it does need some clarification out here, but those numbers shouldn't be affected by people. It's tardy, it's tardy that uh that are getting counted, which we know if they're late, they uh they get counted perhaps and then they don't get corrected because they didn't make it to class on time or whatever, that make it to school on time. So there's some, those particular things out there, but if you get transferred, you're out, you know, you don't keep.
Yeah, and I, you correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, my understanding is from the data he was providing was not necessarily like daily.
Wasn't daily attendance.
It wasn't a daily attendance, it was
October.
It was, it was a, right, count on two different periods. So the number of students enrolled in the school at this snapshot in time versus the number of kids enrolled in the school at this snapshot in time.
But then it compared the two, two years on those two days.
And they compared, right. And then the um there was some specific information in terms of number of students that withdrew from school. Like not just like a class or anything like that, but just from school in itself because they either dropped out or they transferred schools or they went to homeschool. So they were no longer a student within Mount Anthony Union. So that was the kind of the the data that he was providing, not necessarily the the daily information. But I agree with you that those tardy absences should not be, if we're looking at like absences, tardy, I do see that that sometimes doesn't get
Who was looking at enrolled students on two different days, maybe one day in October and then one in February.
And it was, those were the two times where he had to report it to the state, right?
Right, two years, yes, two years, and he gave us two years enrollment number. I also have follow up questions from you on that, like what numbers by category in particular.
Yes, so we'll be reporting it on like, you know, the percentage.
Other Vermont schools.
Right. So I was looking, I was curious of students that are changing to other Vermont schools. You know, just curious of why, like, you know, wanting to make sure that it's there's something that we need to be doing differently within our district to keep those school students enrolled in our school.
Right.
Were there any other committee meetings?
Well, there was, but I don't know who's supposed to report back to this committee, I mean, this board from that. We named three individuals to the policy committee. And a policy committee was held. And I'm not sure that all the other, the other two members, I attended, but I'm not sure who the other people was supposed to be there from this board. Because one of the things is supposed to happen, I mean, I'm, I happen to be, got to be the chair and add in them, but that's not meaning that I gotta do that midcommittee and do everything and then come back here and report on everything when we have three members from this board to be participating in part of it. The policy is very difficult to manage if you're sitting, which you know, when you're sitting in the chair and somebody else is not looking at all of the things. And and that's a graphic committee so that we can get all these things right before we come to the board. And so we need to know, we need those other members to be present. And so what you saw here tonight is what the results were from the policy committee along that line. It's a lot, a lot of reading for me and you don't have to be an expert to be on the policy committee, but we all need the responsibility that we have in terms of policies for the district because that's what drives the district. The uh, the next meeting will be September the eleventh becomes a Labor Day. And it's at four thirty. And and uh we operate with, you know, we create the question that everybody always asks, well, how do I know where does the policies come from and 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 uh how do they get on the list of their agenda and so forth and and so we we answer that every every time we have a meeting almost because we take policies from the the school board association, which you had too, that they told us that we needed to do in the language and so forth along that line. The rest of them, we take, we take some from administrators in which they said, oh, this this is a little bit confusing. You know, to us to be able to do what we need to do to be able to manage the school. And so we take that policy back and look at it. And and try to make sure we understand what is it that needs to be changed and send that to legal to make sure we doing the right thing along that line in terms of uh federal and state requirements and educational requirements and we're not breaking any laws. And so, and the other part is that the school board association tells us that we need to uh every so often review our policies. And I think it's one sixth a year or one of those numbers I hear for that, but we need to review them and and we had generated a second form on the back of the policy that they would see that the policy is in place, but we reviewed it and we didn't make any changes to it. So if somebody wants to say this thing is ten years old when in fact we looked at it last year and that was the issue that we had, we looked at a lot of things but we didn't put a format on and now we added a format to say, okay, we reviewed it on this date and uh changes were made, I know changes were made. If there were changes were made, it came back to you, but then some of them would come back to you so that you can see that it was reviewed and no changes made. So uh it's a very important uh uh responsibility of the boards in terms of the policy. So I would encourage everybody to read and and participate as much as possible. That's 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 what I have, but we need to know, get someone that would be coming back and and doing the same thing that I'm doing here as a way.
How how would, like, how do they even get note, because I didn't even get notified when they were, or anything, so.
Whoever got, I don't know who was notified, I mean, put on it. So, I mean, the administrators, I mean, we send the thing out and it goes to I think it goes to all board members.
I think it's all board members, she said.
I didn't go to the policy committee.
Because I didn't get anything, I didn't get any notice about a meeting. So so I, maybe I can work with Amy and Jerry and we can get it.
Yeah, Amy's, and, I mean, you got S U emails, right? Because that's like
It's awesome. So maybe we can, I can work with Amy to make sure we have.
I didn't know for long, I needed an S U email to put it in seven two, so that was, that was part of my problem.
So we have a pre-meeting and then we get the, I mean, I need to try to put, to get agenda together into the frozen colors and so forth along that line. Then we have the the agenda sent out to all the board members on a Friday morning before the meeting. And so it goes to everybody. Then we hold a meeting that Monday.
Yeah, I'm not that far.
I'm not getting them.
No, that's, that's the process.
Which I don't need to, and I don't yet to get them. I'll read them, but I don't need to know when the meeting is, because I have too many readings right now.
And and the and the committee is formed by the the policy, policy one thousand, which is the policy draft.
And he clarified just to us if multiple people showed up for the policy committee, only the policy committee vote during the
Correct, that's all. If we can have everybody there if they want to, and we have people come all the time and put their input on it because if they, we're discussing, you know, abuse, then we have somebody else come in and and say what we want to know.
Free, we have attorney.
Yes.
Yeah, we have attorney. We, you have people coming in, so we do, just like we have in here, we have people that guess, but it's a task force and we try to listen to everybody. Uh, but then the final vote and uh population of what we're gonna put and bring before from the committee is is voted on by the committee group to do that.
Okay.
And then comes back to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, were there any other committee reports? Um, I Okay, we're in the chairs report, I want to be part of, you know, um, we did we have one day of guests for our half. Um, I just, there was two things that I wanted to bring up, um. One was that I had the privilege of going to the eighth grade celebration, uh the graduation or celebration, um. And I thought they, it was funny, I needed, they didn't do a job and um it was beautiful day. I thought for a moment it was gonna rain, but it did not.
Some little cloud covering, yeah, and I was told after, thank you to you, Leon.
I'm pretty sure Leon attended the high school graduation, so graduation um seniors' graduation. I believe that there were a lot of uh athletic teams that made it to championships this year. It seems like we had a good run for Mount Anthony for this school year. Um, I also had the um privilege of going to the Juneteenth celebration that was put on by our board coordinator, um Jonathan Fiffes. Um, I, that I, that unfortunately was a little bit rained out or a little bit weathered, but there was still a great turnout and it was um a really great job. Um, I did see his resignation, uh the S V S U and the subsequent banner article. Um, I just wanted to say personally that I hope that uh with our S V S U uh representatives will carefully read the recommendations and look, you know, and and look for the position, if not more position. I started to reflect on the fact that we have six elementary schools and two, you know, the middle school, high school and then central office, that's that's a lot and like hopefully put some power behind it, um, as we go forward. Um, the one thing that came up is that I had a board member ask how like for a forum to have like board members make comments in the meeting. I didn't know, I wanted to ask the group whether there, like we wanted to set like a, like a very quick, like whether it's like two minutes like every meeting to have, you know, to have like individual board members, like if they have a comment or something to contribute, that doesn't work. You know, in the agenda forming process, like we have the chair or vice the chair on the super pence, people don't see, really see it until it comes out. Um, I, Susan, who I probably had indicated that in other boards, she's on, there was this little, there's a quick space for that activity. I didn't, I wanted to feel out other members of board to see what, how they feel about that, putting that line on the agenda, recognizing that might take the meeting slightly longer, but also allow people to have a board.
Is that what's on some agendas as other?
Others shouldn't even be on there, it was on last night and I made a doubt that it should be there, vice by attorney. Others shouldn't be there because the topic wasn't warned. So it's kind of an old hole over there. Shows up. I think, you know, from a cut and paste agenda, it shows up. But there are other boards that have, you know, board member comments, I think, I meant you had it at one point, so.
And the elementary board had it, we had it like right after public comments, I think.
Oh, you could put it, do chairs report, members come and I've seen it there too, so it's your agenda, you can add it wherever you want.
I guess I'm looking to the board, would it be valuable to, like, I mean, would, is that something that people would
Yeah, everyone has an option to save their time, but
I mean, and I
With the caveat that everyone is brief?
And respectful, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Is it my brief time?
Oh, yes.
I'd like to suggest the board acknowledge some people for doing a good job, uh specifically Luswe, Living Wars, for the performance their students put on at the evening of the arts. And then Trevor Coyne in baseball, Brooke Remington and Katie Contrada in softball and Frank Garnett for boys lacrosse. I've made some suggestions, but if you think the clerk should do that, I'd be happy to pass that down.
I'll move it to make motion that we provided acknowledgement based on, let's for preference, comments from this board.
Second.
Hi.
My second brief one. Uh, you remember, we had the discussion of a problem uh racist remarks in middle school. I went to a game the next day and if you read the spectator code of conduct policy, this is especially true with respect to a person's race, gender, sexual orientation, et cetera. The next line, if the behavior or hate speech is observed and or reported, the official will stop the event immediately, immediately eject from the event, ending the event early, forfeiture, et cetera, et cetera. To me, talking to them, they just don't seem equal. I'm a little confused.
Um, so are you, are you suggesting that what is on the back of that isn't aligned with some of our other like procedures in the organization or or in the
Is the V P A policy to have that on the back?
On the back?
And Dave, what you're saying is we're not really meeting the level of what V P A asked for, correct?
That's what I'm saying, thank you.
So are you asking, are you asking that it, the policy committee would
Maybe.
That is something that you could bring to the policy committee, is that how that would
I don't know where the this uh, when, the VP is asking for that, uh whether it should be on the, I mean, it's in, it's in the athletic activities handbook is where I think he took part of it from, is that correct? Is what it should be stating and that should be behind the policy and then if someone else has some regulations, they can get onto that in terms of administrative rigs. So what you're doing is you're saying, I mean, what they're saying there is that what ought to take place at a, at a, an activity if, and and I I heard the point about officials there, if a student is participate, a player, we have rights to uh tee up the, uh tee up the players. And if the administrator at that site don't do their job, we did have the right to forfeit the contest for a home team or the team that's acting unruly. But there's, the administrator has some responsibilities in there with the coaches and things as opposed to saying, and so what, when you ask him where does it belongs and where did it go? It goes into the activities for the, the uh the sports and so forth in that handbook and things out here, and it need to have the meat that the minister, that they
I think, I think they're saying though is what's, what's being spoken or the statement from athletic events seems more strict than the wider S U or district statement. And so how do we make that more consistent, right?
Yes, you can, you can always be stricter than that, you can't be less than that.
Oh, that's, that's what they're saying is we're not, we're not strict enough, but
I mean, our buildings, we're not as strict as we are on our fields.
Policy in building is first step, you get a talking to.
It's like the administrators, I believe it was the, the, I think you still were referencing probably what is being referenced.
I feel like this is a bigger conversation and I'm not sure if we want to dive into it right now or not, but there's, there's a little bit more of a clarification.
Okay, so perhaps maybe we either schedule time as like in the next meeting or if there's there's a committee that should, it should go through first to discuss, but I mean, this feels like a whole board conversation to me personally.
Yes.
And I'm happy to join for it.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Then maybe perhaps we can have, um, on the next agenda, we can have a spot to have a board conversation, so that we can come prepared and we can have a session, is that, is that um, is there anyone else since I, actually, or is there anyone else that wants to um make a, like a quick comment?
Yeah, um, I just think I wanted to expand on uh Jonathan's resignation letter just because I know it's an S V S U level thing, but um it it wasn't sent to us, so I, if if everyone hasn't read it, I think it's, I think it's something that everybody should read. Um, you know, I I just got to know Jonathan over this year really and um to, you know, I, A, I think we we wish, we should read it for the, again, you know, we should, we should take that spirit of recognizing all the good things that we've done and Dave's always very good about that. And we should also, without feeling attacked, you know, we should take um the criticism and really, and take it to heart, I think. And because I, I think he's voicing um the concerns of a lot of teachers, a lot of parents. And so I think um, I think we should really look into a lot of the things that he said, um, because honestly, he's activated a lot of the things that were a problem for me when I was a teacher. So um, and so like, it it is just through the prism of equity and everything like that, it's really, I think it's, um, you know, from the top down, a- anything education related. So I I just, I hope everyone will read, it's on banner, I'm not fucking the banner, um, I'll, I'll email it to you. If you think that's what I'm doing, I'll email you the uh the letter, but I hope everyone reads it.
Or any other?
I would definitely really like to read it.
Yeah, I'll help you some.
Okay, Wendy, you're all set?
Yep. Yeah, I think that, you know, it, they mentioned that we'll have a special meeting about this in the future and I think it's really important that we sort of you know, look at what we're doing currently as far as you know, look at what we're doing currently as far as hate speech is concerned and how we're treating it. And if it, if it's not equal on the field and in the classroom, why is that? Um, so I think a further discussion will be beneficial.
Great, thank you. We'll set that up and confirm uh the next scheduled meeting and Good. Um, is there any other discussion other than that? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And Susan also texted um that the house is okay.